Okay, baby. The city attorney's on his way up.
Well, it just, we don't need him for the beginning of this meeting. So let's start with the invocation.
Thank you, please rise. Let's bow our head this evening and thank God for this new day and for all of the-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Yolanda. I apologize. I got, I got ahead of myself. Today is Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. It is now 7:31 PM. And this is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is now called to order. Now for the invocation, please.
Thank you. Let's bow our head this evening and thank God for this new day and for all of the blessing that it brings. We ask him for guidance and presence as we go about our daily tasks and responsibilities. And we ask that he gives us the strength and resilience to face whatever challenges may come our way and to help us be a source for love and support for those that surround us. We pray tonight for all of our law enforcement officers so that they are safe and are able to return home to their families and for our first responders and our firefighters who are also putting their lives on the line and saving lives in the community. And we thank the Lord for this and we pray for, for all of them. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Please stay rising for Budget of Legions.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy DaBlanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to take an item out of order. Item C. If we can please, please read the item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C, Presentation of Recognition to Lieutenant Myrna Lopez on Her Retirement from the City of West Miami Police Department After 25 Years of Service to the City of West Miami.
Thank you, Chief, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commission, Madam Manager. It is with the pleasure that we present retired Lieutenant Myrna Lopez. You want to come up? Myrna Lopez was with the City of West Miami Police Department for 25 years and she retired just recently, within the last week or so. She's the seventh female to work for us in the City of West Miami Police Department. She was the first female bike officer, second female officer to be made sergeant, and she also held the rank of detective in our police department. And she did a very good job while she was here and we're going to miss her, so. You have anything to say?
I want to thank the Commission for honoring me for 20 years, 25 years of service. It has been an honor to work for the residents. I've made very good friends. I've made a lot of, met a lot of great young men that have become officers and loved working with them. I will miss my crew. They were excellent. I thank the Administration for everything they've done for me. And I will miss the residents because I really made a lot of good friends and had a lot of good memories of the people that I worked for. So it was a pleasure working for West Miami.
Well, I, I remember, I, I think you might be the first officer that I remember in my, in my head as a toddler, so.
I do remember you, yeah.
So that's, that, that goes to show either, you know, how long you've been with the department or, or, or how, or how young I am. I'm going to say how young I am, right?
Those were the best calls for alarm calls that we went to because that house is gorgeous.
But I, I, I'm very appreciative of your service to, to our community. You know, you're obviously always welcome back and, and do anything you, you know, we, like here, we are, we are very appreciative. I can, I guess, speak for the Commission. I'm sure the Commission will like say some words also, but we're very, very appreciative. And we look forward to hopefully having officers of your caliber continue our department.
Thank you. I'm also very thankful. I have a very large family and a lot of them should have.
I was wondering if those are protests or-
I'm one of six. I'm one of six, so.
Go ahead.
Myrna, thank you. Thank you very much for serving us, serving the City of West Miami. Thank you for serving me. I know that you were at my house once and you helped me out in my time of need and something I'll never forget. Anyways, I, I wish you luck. Godspeed, you know?
Thank you.
And have fun in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you as well. 25 years is a long time for you to dedicate yourself to our community. This is where our families live. And so we're always very appreciative to yourself and then the other men and women that you work with. Our residents throw block parties for our police officers here, right? Like, that's how appreciative everyone in this community is for the work that you guys have done. And you being here 25 years, you kind of set the blueprint for everyone else that has come, is coming behind you. So we appreciate everything that you did and then everything that's going to occur after you're gone because of that blueprint that you set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Myrna, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to tell you a short story, history. I remember when we in the Cuban started to came here in the 60s. I came in 61 in a boat. And I remember we started to sail door to door. Toasters, mixers, things like that. And I remember one car was for five or six people. With the car drop off in different parts of the city. Corredos, West Miami, Miami, different areas. And I remember always was the same thing. Be careful to the driver. Be careful when you're driving West Miami because the police in West Miami is very tough. That was in 1960, 1970, and 1980. But in 70, it was terrible. West Miami was difficult with the police department. Years has been passing. Then life, you know, has been living here for more than 30 years. In our department, it's respect. The drivers, even the, the, the bad guys, they know. West Miami, they have to be careful because we have a great fire department now too. We have a new fire department here, you know, the Rebecca Sosa, the Commissioner brought that. And the police department, our police department always has been very respected. And Myrna, in the years you have been here, I appreciate very much because every time something happens, no, the woman, the woman, policewoman, she was watching with this, da-da-da. They always refer, make a reference to her. She was tough in her duty. I mean, she did right. So congratulations, you did very good. Thank you very much. We are going to miss you. You look younger now with the police uniform.
You're fresh now.
I, I know we have a recognition. Yes, let's get it up. Commissioners, please join me.
Myrna, you first.
Well, you first, you first.
I just presented to the City of West Miami Police Department in recognition for your contributions to the City of West Miami with 25 years of service to the police department and for your loyalty, commitment, and dedication by promoting excellence in public service and improving the quality of life of the City of West Miami and its citizenry. Wishing you all well-deserved retirement with our gratitude dated this 5th of April, 2023. For myself, the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Candy DaBlanca, who is also our Police Chairwoman, Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr., and Commissioner Luciano Suarez. Congratulations. Thank you.
Smile, please.
All right. Chief, please.
Halle. They're coming now, Halle.
Get out of the way. There are policemen in there. Yep.
I don't even want to see the family picture.
That's my family. They'll be okay.
Family.
Yes.
Big family, Myrna.
I do. I have a, and I hope it's really good. Both girls have masters and she just started Academy Day three. The most.
Segue la familia.
Yeah, I know, I know. Now smile now.
Well, my friend, Dan, Sami, Myrna. Myrna. Can you give my photo picture? Have that. Where's your, where's your? In the first, the whole person back. Dan, you're in the picture. You're in the picture. Thank you.
Thank you again and thank you to all our officers. I know some, some of which are, are on shift now, so thank you. Appreciate it. So, Madam Clerk.
Item B, Mr. Mayor.
If, no, if you could, yeah, item B, actually. And we'll get back to the order of the agenda.
Yeah, item B, Presentation of Miami-Dade County Fire, County Department Annual Report, Summer Rising, the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Services to the City of West Miami, 2022.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of this great Commission, Madam Manager, to all the residents, friends, and family here. You know, welcome and thank you for, for the invitation. Mr. Mayor, before I begin, I actually just would like to comment about Myrna. She doesn't remember me 22 years ago.
I think she just did.
Yes. It's a small world. It's a very small world. So I was a rookie here at Station 40 when it was still in the, the garage area. And Myrna was a police officer, running patrol units here. And what a, an absolute class act. Great woman, great police officer, great public servant. You know, she is, she truly embodies what, you know, West Miami is. And when I just saw her walk up and I was just asking Flaco, you know, two days ago, has he seen you? And he had just mentioned to me that you were retiring. And, you know, I had told him to tell you, you know, best wishes. And now I see you up here and I just want to really highlight the, an absolute great loss for the, the City of West Miami. So Myrna, I, once again, just an absolute class act. And I know it's a small world, but, you know, congratulations on retirement, so. So, once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this invitation. My name is Ray Daddala, Fire Chief, newly appointed, eight months as Fire Chief with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. I would like to, you know, before I begin with the annual 2022 service report, I'd like to recognize a couple of members of my team. Danny Cardozo, the Chief of Operations, Deputy Chief of Operations. Erica Benitez, my Chief of Staff. Maria Reyes, my Assistant Director, overseeing the entire South Operations from Flagler all the way down to Monroe County, Ralph Baena. And the Battalion Chief that responsible for the West Miami area, Ray Aguirre. So, once again, thank you for this invitation, the, the opportunity to present the report. And I'd like to begin at this time.
Go ahead, Chief.
So. All right, so our department overview in regards to Miami-Dade Fire Rescue as part of West Miami. So Miami-Dade Fire Rescue began in 1935, originated in 1935 with over 2,800 personnel. Operating out of 71 fire stations. I think you're going on the, yeah. It's okay. Operating out of 71 fire stations, 158 first-line operational units. You know, we have, you know, two full air, two full-time air rescue units and we are an accredited fire department, one of only 301 fire departments out of the tens of thousands across the United States. Go ahead. So, couple of highlights with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue from last year. You know, we placed three operational units in service, including the high axle water vehicle that's been utilized in different parts of Miami-Dade County. In addition to that, we did purchase a couple of more to place in the event that we do have floods throughout the, the Miami-Dade County area. Last year, we hired 92 firefighters. As of this year, we just hired 84 firefighters and we actually have a class of, another class or two coming up in the next few months. So in regards to the City of West Miami. It's okay. That's all right. So Miami-Dade Fire Rescue has been the fire department, your fire department since 1981. And in 2022, we ran exactly 1,200 calls in the City of West Miami. As you can see here, you know, there's two stations that service West Miami where 90% of the calls, you know, are, are run by two stations. And as you can see, 84% of the calls are run by Station 40, the station that's next door. Of those incidents, once again, 84%, 1,000 of those calls just from Station 40 alone. And Station 3, which is located in Tropical Park, you know, ran, you know, a few of the percentage. And then we had a couple of other stations that surround the West Miami area, four other stations that surround the West Miami area that responded into the City of West Miami. Now, what you see before you is the geographical map with the boundaries of West Miami. And the one that's slightly colored green with the, the fire station symbol is Station 40. And surrounding it is the various stations that actually service West Miami, even when Station 40 is on another call or additional resources come. So Station 3 from Tropical Park, you know, they come as far as Virginia, so, excuse me, from South Miami, even from Doral if necessary. Now, we have, as you can see here, additional 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 4 stations within four miles of West Miami and then an additional two mile, two stations that are just outside of the four-mile mark. You know, the, there's 52 personnel that run into the City of West Miami in the event that there is a large incident. Could be a structural fire, could be a, a large hazmat call. But typically, it is Station 40, as you saw, 84% of the calls that are run into West Miami are run out of Station 40. So last year in 2022, of the 1,200 calls, there was an average response time of 6 minutes and 12 seconds, you know, for medical calls. And just under 6 minutes for structure fire calls. Are you able to give? Okay. So for the countywide average, it's 7 minutes and 19 seconds, where the City of West Miami is receiving an average of 6 minutes and 12, 6 minutes and 12 seconds. And then for structure fires, the city is averaging 5 minutes and 49 seconds. All right. So our community engagement in 2022, I know I was speaking to, you know, former mayor, you know, we do quite a few events in West Miami. And, you know, our personnel just absolutely, you know, enjoy it. We, we did have five community events. These are scheduled, large-scale events. Does not include the dozens of hands-on truck demonstrations that, you know, our fire truck from West Miami goes to schools and goes to little events. We sent, we sent 20% of the MDFR EMS patients monthly and of those 20 residents sent back a survey of 4.78, which has a 96% satisfaction rate. And this is specifically for West Miami. And we actually have a quote from a resident from West Miami. "As a patient, I am very grateful for the care provided. Everything was quick and efficient. Thank you very much and keep up the good work." And again, that is a specific resident from West Miami. And the next slide is a, a community event that we ran in 2022. It's just, you know, again, I know that we had, you know, conversations and, you know, there are certain stations of the 71 firehouses, there's pride and ownership and Station 40 has that pride and ownership. They absolutely love the community. They absolutely love the areas that they work. You could see it in the way they, you know, respond to calls, the way that they love the community. And, you know, I can't, you know, say enough, my rookie year started off here at the Station 40. And it's just really, I'm honored to be standing here before you as the Fire Chief, you know, providing the, the annual report. It's just a full circle. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I want to say thank you and I appreciate the opportunity.
No, we, we thank you and, you know, I'm sure that resident in the picture that threw the block party, which I think was alluded to by Commissioner Chavez before, Ms. Janowitz, I'm sure she will be very excited that it made it onto the presentation. She's hosting it again, so I hope to see Station 40 out there again. They're, they're very, as you know, they call themselves La Familia. They, they're very, very outgoing in terms of their, their support and branding of West Miami. They're very much ingrained in the community. I, you know, as you know, because you, you started here as a rookie, it's, they're fantastic station and fantastic department that you, that you run. So we're very thankful for you and, and your, and all the people in your department. And I know my family in particular this past year had, had some, some services, lifesaving services rendered, so I can't be more appreciative and thankful. And, you know, keep up the good work. I, I agree with that resident. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much again. A pleasure and an honor. Thank you.
Excuse me. We have two, one retired firefighter and one active. You have something to say? I'll wait for it. You go first, you go first.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Chief, for those of you that don't know, I'm a third-generation firefighter. My grandfather actually started with, he was with Miami-Dade County Fire Rescue for a very long time. And then my father, sitting over here, City of Miami, and then my brother, sister, and I now work in Miami Beach. It was always a dream of mine to become a firefighter. My grandfather, you know, started us off on that journey. And throughout the years taking classes, we come to befriend a lot of other firefighters, people that go on to work for other departments. And I know the Chief touched on different numbers and those are important and the residents see and they understand that that's important, but I want to speak on the caliber of person that works in that department because a lot of those aforementioned relationships that I made are people that ended up in Miami-Dade County. And I go to shift, our shifts are 24 hours. So I leave my family here in West Miami. And it, I understand what it takes to protect other people's families, but I leave to Miami Beach to do that. And I feel comfortable doing that because I know that these gentlemen, these men and women are here protecting mine. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you for, for what you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Absolutely just floored by the comments. Thank you so much. Absolute honor.
Well, I was a City of Miami fireman for firefighter for 33 years. Luckily, I never got burned.
Oh, God bless.
But I can tell you that sitting here, I've been burned many times. Many, many times. And I still get burned every once in a while. I, I want to thank you, thank the men and women of the Miami-Dade Fire Department for, for their services. We're lucky to have you servicing our, the city. Again, thank you. And I hope that it's even a better year.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you.
I, I just like to say something. I remember when you was there in the 40 downstairs.
Yes, sir.
Small, small room.
Yes, it was a little garage, yes.
No room for, for, for the truck. I remember that. But anyway, since that time, our people, our city, we, the resident, we love your, your department. Because you was always, you know, first-class of service, servicing the, the young, the old, the middle, and the, and the, young kids playing and the, and the wreck, any problem, you was there, you know, in the minutes. So we love you, you know, that's why it's, you feel good because we love you.
And we love you, sir.
I know, a lady told me, every time the rescue come around, I, I tried to, to bring them coffee. She made coffee for the firefighters, she said. But anyway, I think we appreciate very much the work and I want to bring to the point, Mayor. Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, she fought very hard.
Yes, sir.
To bring, to take you out of the closet, the garage and make the, the station that we have now.
Yes, and.
It's great.
Yeah, I'm well aware of, you know, the, what West Miami and Commissioner Sosa has done. And she is someone we've always looked up to and we continue to look up to and, you know, and we continue to actually, you know, reach out to her to make sure she's doing well. So we're well aware of, you know, and just absolutely honored and, and proud of the work that she's done, not just for Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, but for the entire community, all of public safety too. So, so yes, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
There is one thing.
Yes, sir.
Our residents always like. In Christmas time, Station 40 put lights, you know, it's a spectacle what they do always. So we appreciate that too.
Well, I'll make sure I pass it on. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's get back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4, Presentation of Minutes for Approval for March 15, 2023, Regular Commission Meeting.
Motion.
Point of reference.
Go ahead.
We have a past mayor sitting here in the audience and we have not recognized him. So you know what? I, I want, I want to recognize.
Oh, I, 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 you know, I saw his hand back there and I didn't, and I, and I apologize. I didn't, I didn't catch it. Please, Mayor, please.
I'm sorry. I apologize to break the meeting, but I have to do it. So of the year, when I was mayor here, you know, we all, Station 40, I thought I was never going to have to use it because, you know, I've never had anything in my whole life, never been to hospital, never done, lucky that way. But about a month ago, I was here living in West Miami, did my exercises, started feeling a little chest pain. I said, I don't have anything because, you know, I don't get anything. But it got a little worse and a friend of mine said I'm going to call rescue. And they called rescue and 40 got there, incredible. I forgot the, the firefighter's name, the, the young lady I told you about. Extreme professional. I, of course, didn't have anything. I wasn't going, but she assured me that I was going on that stretcher that day with her. I then found out that I was, you know, I was having, and I didn't know that at the time, according to the doctors, a massive heart attack with a- time, according to the doctors, a massive heart attack with a 5% chance of survival, and if they hadn't gotten me to the rescue, to the Hot Stop Miami, which is, by the way, an incredible unit too, because they really work together good, and I know they were talking, and the amount of work they did on that truck was, because you lie there, and there's IVs going in and all these things, and, I mean, so they really prepped it. So, I, I got to tell you, the first time I got to use it once, and apparently, from the people telling me in the hospital, it saved my life. So, that's not bad, because it was one of those, it was one of those major ones.[629.77][629.77](laughter). They, you know, they told me it was, it was the L A, L, what do you call it? The LAD. It was almost 99% blocked, it was the only one, and the surgeon told me that, you know, the time was of the essence, and what they do to you in prepping was of the essence. So, I, I'm one of those residents that, I guess, would have filled the, the thing, and just like the other residents, to, to say thank you, because you don't know until you, until you're, I always, you know, I, as the chief knows, et cetera, my respect for police and firefighters is incredible, but when you actually need it, and, and take care of it, that's, you know, and again, she was very strict with me, she said, she assured me that I was going to go on the stretcher, I complied, and thank God, right? So, I thank you guys.
What day was you born?
Pardon me?
What day was you born?
February, apparently, they say February 11th. They kept asking me that in, in the, in the hospital the next day, when was I born? I would tell them my date, and I thought it was to see if I, you know, remember things. But then the nurses would laugh, no, you were born February 11th.
It, it, it was, it was Captain Napolos that was, was leading that rescue, yeah.
We'll definitely reach out, but thank you for sharing the information, and these are the great moments, the great stories that we take back with us and we share with them.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a real one, that comes from the heart. Well, actually, from the heart.
No pun intended.
Thank you. Let's get back to the order of the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Chavez. We need a second and vote.
You have a second? We have a second, we have a motion and a second, you can vote from there, it's fine. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item five, public comments. I guess not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Next item?
Item six, report of a city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission. I have a written report this evening. Would you like to hear on all the topics that I'm covering?
Yeah, go, go, go ahead, and, and I'll, I'll go after you. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. As you are aware.
Hold on, hold on, I, I want to make sure that, that you're not interrupted. Uh, Commissioner?
He's putting a fire out. Putting a fire out.
Is there, is there a fire I don't know about? I mean, we're, we're really not, we haven't, we haven't, it's a short agenda. Just give him a moment. Just give him a moment, I think he's wrapping up. I, I still want to interrupt the manager.
Thank you.
Commissioner, come on. Come on.
VIP people.
You bet, you bet.
And what am I, got to go over here?
We have to pay attention to this.
Go ahead, Madam Manager. Go ahead.
All right, so, going back to the first item on my report deals with the FERDA grant. As you know, for months, we have been reporting on the difficulties that we have had with the FERDA grant from the Land Water Conservation Fund project. As you are aware, we tried to, I guess, race with this project to try to complete it by April 30th, and it has been virtually impossible to complete the project or make any significant progress where we can close it out on April 30th. So, before I wrote the withdrawal letter, I felt that I owed you the respect to report to you that the state of Florida is recommending at this time that we withdraw from the grant, and I echo those sentiments. I think that if we withdraw elegantly from the grant, we will not be penalized, and we will be in a position to apply for new funding come the next cycle, which is, comes out on April 12th.
Yeah, but, but, let's do that to make sure we're not, uh.
So, I didn't want to do this and, and put pen to paper unless.
Absolutely.
I had your blessing. So, that's, that's on the FERDA grant. We are now starting to work on the comprehensive plan, and I have a feeling that we're going to have to meet some aggressive schedules to make sure that that report is in the hands of the Department of Economic Opportunity for the state of Florida. We are scheduling a meeting with Dr. Ned Murray, who is out for the Easter holiday. I believe you received a report with your agenda packet on Friday, when the agenda was published, on the scope of the work that needs to take place for us to accomplish not only the comprehensive plan, but our ear-based amendments, if we're going to be talking about any amendments to the plan, and the inclusion of the property rights element pursuant to a new law that was enacted by the Florida Legislature last year. Please review the scope of the work. We're going to come to you and ask you to set some dates and some times in the coming weeks to meet. We're going to attempt to meet with Dr. Murray Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. Mr. Mayor, if you want to sit in on that meeting, we welcome you to do so. Along with the scope of the services, Dr. Murray, who works for Florida International University, and on behalf of Florida International University, which is a public institution, has given us a proposal for his services in connection with this project. I'd like to bring that to you for consideration at the April 19th, 2023 city commission meeting.
Okay.
So, I think we need to devote our attention to the comp plan process so that we can actually meet that June 30th deadline. The next item on my report deals with a vulnerability study. We're currently involved with the preparation of the scope of the services. As a matter of fact, Frank Alonso, our city engineer, submitted the scope of service for the work that comes with this grant. This is pretty much like a feasibility study on what we need to do to continue to gear to, into, to be prepared better for storms and harden the structures for the city. So, our grant writer, our city engineer, Mr. Penna and I are currently working on this project. We have $55,000 that we'd like to collect from the state so that we can complete this assessment report. We will continue to work with staff and execute the agreement. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday morning to try to get that scope and, and budget and the projects into the state.
And that one, I believe we, we spoke earlier, was, was a straight no-match?
Yeah, that's a straight grant, there's no-match requirement. We had applied for $75,000, but they funded 55,000.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
The next item, and I'll leave the, saving this one for last, I want to remind everyone that on Good Friday, we are closed for business, as we do customarily. The, we issued an email this afternoon to all the departments. We are making arrangements for the community center to give meals to our seniors tomorrow so that they can have a meal for Friday for the congregate program, and then the home-delivered meal will see no interruption with their service. There will be garbage collection on Friday as customary. Freebie. The hours of operation for freebie on-demand service in effect now is from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, to 6:00 PM. The hours were reduced due to the completion of the FDOT grant, which we closed out the first grant, and we can no longer pay for extended services because we have an allocation from PTP money from the 20% proceeds for the surtax. So, we've gone ahead and reduced the hours based on where we see the, the big need, or let's say, the jump in the numbers for people that use the service. If there's any future grants, we can revisit this and, at a later time. And the last thing on my, in my report.
Well, I, I guess I'll, I'll interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
The, you know, the, the last item on the report goes to conversations that Manager and I have been having probably since, when, last May, probably last May, going, going far back, when, when she discovered that there was a possibility that she would, you know, have another, another family member. And as that progress ensued, you know, we had discussions that, you know, for, for a long time, and we was contemplating the budget, we were, we were having discussions, and then finally, it, it hit, and, and the, her fifth, fifth grandchild was born, and things became a little more real, and, and as part of that, you know, we've been working on a, on a plan where, where the manager is going to take a step, step back for official role as city manager, which in most cities is a very painful process, usually an ugly process, you know, and, and in this case, is a very happy process because of the reasons. And, but, I, I, I think very soon will, will be, be clear that the manager is not leaving us. She's just, we're, we're just re-scoping her, her role. I think by next commission meeting, we will have, hopefully, something in front of us to keep the manager and her experience with us, and so I look forward to that. But, Madam Manager, please.
Thank you. Mayor, I think you've, you've really summarized the entire situation.
Mayor, may, may, may I?
I don't, I don't want to interrupt the manager.
I know, I know, she's talking, but I want to talk about that.
But the manager's talking, so please.
I know, but I ask you if you're kind.
I, I, I would like the manager to.
Can I talk your language?
I, I'm, I'm, sir, I'm the mayor, please.
Will you let me talk?
Please, please go ahead with your report.
It's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll say something after. Let me deal to Commissioner Suarez, it's okay.
Please, please go ahead with your report, please.
Okay. All right, so, after, after long nights of sleepless nights and, and a lot of prayer and.
Mayor, I have to go to upstairs.
Okay.
I, I feel that this is the best decision for me. I, I've been blessed with 40 years of service to the city of West Miami, the residents, the different members of the city commission, different mayors that I've served under, and I feel that this is the best decision. I can't, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to the city if I'm, if I go help my daughter with, with a baby a couple days a week, or a couple afternoons, or a couple of mornings, I feel I'm taking something that I should, that I'm not entitled to.
And the other grandkids, right?
And my other grandchildren, but right now, we're talking about a, a baby that's three weeks old today, and as I see my granddaughters, they have grown overnight. I have a 17-year-old going on 18-years-old pretty soon, granddaughter, and these years have, have, have gone by in the blink of an eye, and this is the last grandchild, no question about it. And so, I want to make sure that I'm there. My husband and I want to make sure that we're there every step of the way, so that we can continue to nurture our, our relationship with our grandchildren and help our kids while they are embarking in their profession and their, their businesses, because now they have a big family to maintain. So, I think that it, the time has come for me to take a different role, if you would. I'm always going to be a phone call away, no matter what. This is my city, I love it with a passion, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm investing in my house at this time, and so, I don't know, I think it's just, everything has come to, to full circle, and I think that it's time for me to step aside and allow another person, another individual to come in and, and also proffer good ideas that may be of tremendous benefit to the city.
We're, we're, we're very happy for, for your family.
So.
And, and I look forward to that item coming where we can disclose what we have planned.
Yes, sir.
At the next commission meeting. The, we're looking for a transition period, I've discussed with the manager on a number of occasions, for, to have, we, we think it's appropriate that a new manager come in prior to the June 1st numbers related to the budget. So, we're looking at a mid-May to late-May transition, effective transition. That being said, the selection process will come at the same time as that, that item for, for the manager to keep her involved in our city. So, we're looking at selection at the, at the next meeting, and also an item related to the manager at that meeting for an effective date of admittedly May. So, we'll be looking at that. Thank you for your report, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Next item, please.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, of course.
I'd like, I'd like to comment here, because, you know, I, I think it's almost unbelievable. I've been dealing with Yolanda Aguilar for over 22, 23 years, and we fought like cats and dogs.
I'm, I'm so sorry, Madam Manager.
Sometimes I feel the same way.
We've argued, we've fought, we've, you know, talked to each other for a couple of days, you know, I mean, mad as hell at each other, but, you know, always, always, you know, wanting to, to better the city of West Miami, and to make the city of West Miami a, a, a better place. And, you know, we, we've always worked together towards that, and I'm, I'm very happy and proud to, to, to have worked with her. We've done a lot of great things here through the years. We've accomplished a lot, innumerable, innumerable amount of things, and, boy, I'm not going to have anybody to fight with now, you know.
Don't worry, she still has a phone. She still has a phone.
She has a phone, you know where I live.
I'll stop by for my week fight.
You got it.
But I want to thank you. Thank you, you know, for, you know, for, for the many years of service and, and putting up with me and, and accommodating me with my, you know, with my thoughts and ideas and, and bringing them to fruition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate those words.
Well, you know, I, again, I don't, you know, this is a small city, and.
I'm not moving out, don't worry.
As you, as you see, so.
I want to say congrats as well. With a 14-month-old at home, I see how quickly the time is passing, how quickly he's growing, so I'm happy that you're going to be able to enjoy your grandson. I don't want to make people think about your age or anything, but you were on your five-year anniversary when I was born, that's how long you've been in this city, and that blows me away, and you deserve it, so happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
I have a couple of items to report, Mr. Mayor. We were successful, as I reported last time, in settling a, what is akin to Riddle-Sortari in a red light camera. In addition, that was done at a minimal cost on attorney's fees. However, we were hit with another writ, which is actually a, a administrative appeal, which is akin to the Riddle-Sortari. The issue is that if there's a precedent on, against the city of West Miami, there's going to be a hemorrhage of cases against the city, and the city will not be able to afford that, so I need your authorization to represent the city in this particular case.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues with that? Do you need a, what do you need? Need a, a blessing or a, or a vote? What do you need?
I need your blessing, that's all.
Okay. You were blessed.
The other thing. The other thing is that when it time comes, when it comes out to the right moment, I think the Vice Mayor will address the issues with a particular ordinance that we have for second reading today. It came out to my attention yesterday by Mr. Penna, that a citizen was going to give me a call on a critical issue that might affect the successful, successfully, I don't want to use the word the wrong word, but, the review of the vacation rental. And I, I think that there's several issues that we have to amend. We have to amend the heading, the whereas.
This is item A of today's agenda?
Yes, it's going to be that, but the mayor, I just wanted to tell you about it.
Got it.
And the Vice Mayor will address that issue.
Got it. Is that it for your report?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, attorney. Next item?
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I don't have a, a specific report tonight, just touching base on a few of the projects. We have three projects under construction. The, the water main project, which hopefully we'll be able to wrap up here soon, waiting for some. for some pipe to get here so we can wrap up, pave the road and, and move on. Drainage project is finally underway. We're over on 16th Terrace now, doing some drainage work there. And of course, the rec center. We finally got our design builder, finally got all their permits, so we're ready to kind of hit that pretty hard now. So things are moving.
Beautiful.
There's also an item related to the intersection out here on 62nd and 9th. I don't know if you want to touch on that now.
Let's just, let's just wait, let's just, isn't there two items on that?
I believe there's two, yes.
Okay, let's, let's take, let's take item F with, when we take unfinished item A, let's get through the committee reports and.
Mr. Mayor, I'd.
Go ahead.
I'd like to defer this item indefinitely and touch base with.
Okay, let's just, we'll do that together. Yeah, let's just get through committee reports and then we'll, we'll handle that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question of the city engineer. Frank, the design build is the next phase, which is the DEP money, the $2 million from the state. That's the next phase?
That is phase three, yes.
Phase three. And that is what the next phase that you're going to move on to?
Well, the next phase of construction actually is phase two, which is, not sure yet what pot of money because we were, we were, we were going after some other monies to, to move around the ARPA money.
Right.
Phase two is the next one that's going to be coming out to bid.
And that's why I, I'm asking you, so very preliminary, I had a conversation with the mayor and I think we may want to shuffle some of those.
Yeah.
Funding priorities around. So if you could, you and I could talk tomorrow.
Yeah, I think once we have.
I'll follow up.
Once we have that funding secured, then I think we can make that switch.
And then we'll come at the next commission meeting and, and state everything, you know, in writing for the record and.
Yeah.
Try to make the necessary changes as soon as possible so that there's no confusion as to what pot of money we're working on.
Yeah, that's, that's very important. Thank you for the flag.
Yeah, that's critical because we're getting ready to go out to bid on that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a very good flag. And I'm, on this, on, on that item, when it comes to funding, last, last week I was, last two weeks, I was in Tallahassee and, and DC, both on the funding priorities. We have, I guess I'll just report on this while, because it leads into a, in, in, in the Florida legislature, we are in, in both budgets, in the House and the Senate, we are in for 1.5 million in the House, which was a bloodbath for most cities. And we are in for 500 in the Senate. So I feel very confident with our level of support in Tallahassee right now. And we, you know, we seem on track to, to be getting, you know, a million plus in, in, in appropriations, hopefully when conference comes around. In Washington, we had a very tight deadline and I'm very appreciative, while I was in Tallahassee, we were handling this. I'm very appreciative to the manager and to the engineer on, on the deadlines that you guys helped me. I know we were kind of running at it for, for the earmark process in DC. I got confirmation yesterday after a call with the engineer, last minute call again, that we are submitted to the committees for another $2 million. So that's got to go through the processes, but at the moment, we are still, we're in play for another $2 million from the federal government to add to the three that we received and we're going through the process of actually capturing from last year's budget. So thank you guys for that fast work. I appreciate it. That was necessary because we really, we were running on seconds and I'm very appreciative. And yeah, we'll talk about that. I think it's very important we reshuffle some of the priorities to make sure that we are able to fund everything we need to fund.
Excellent.
Well, yeah. Next item, please.
Item nine, committee reports.
I guess we had a parks meeting, go ahead.
So we had a parks meeting earlier. Basically, what we were trying to decide upon was if we were going to bring an item to the commission to vote on the pickleball courts again.
Okay.
Based on the FERDA grant falling through, we had that $200,000 that we had already said that we were going to spend on the pickleball courts, the playground and the baseball field lights. FERDA fell through, we can no longer do the baseball field lights. The board decided, you know, after a pretty lengthy conversation, that they would like to hold off on spending the money on the pickleball courts just in case there is an issue with the lights. So at the moment, we're waiting until the next grant cycle because they feel that the lights are probably going to fail soon and they'd rather have that money in hand so that if we were, if we were to have to go out and fix the lights, I believe it's $250,000 more or less, $240,000 was the bid for the lights. So they'd rather keep that money in hand and wait for the next grant cycle. So the board voted on that. We are going to be putting off the pickleball courts and tennis courts till a later date.
Okay.
In addition to that, we had the Easter event. I just want to say thank you to the employees that, as usual, did a great job with that. There was a great turnout. And I want to highlight also the, the rec employees because I'm sure all of you, everyone sees them, they're out there hiking around the city, dropping off flyers and making sure that the event, the, the news of the event is spread and then it's a, the success that it was, so.
Yeah, and a, a special thank you to police. I know that they, they have a lot to deal with at that event especially. A lot of egg huntie parents, egg hungry parents, I don't even know the kids, but the parents for sure. And they, they put up a lot with that event, but we were very appreciative. And also to, to Kade Acosta, I know she, she takes a, she takes a very big load in that event and, and makes it very, very important to a success. So, so I want to give a special highlight to her. And I'm sure the manager will include that in her, in her memo to.
Yes, there is a memo, Mr. Mayor, that include your signature and mine recapping and echoing the sentiments of the commission.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 10, under unfinished business, we have a item A which is also connected to item 11F, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let's take, let's take both of them together.
So let me read both.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, item 10A, follow-up report in reference to Southwest 62nd Avenue and 9th Street crosswalk as requested by Commissioner Evan Chavez Jr. This is for report by city engineer and item 11F, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute a work, work order submitted by AMI Engineering in connection with the Southwest 62nd Avenue and 9th Street crosswalk for professional design and construction and engineering inspection services in the amount of $18,300 to be funded by People's Transportation Plan, PTP, surtax enterprise fund reserves, providing for an effective date.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, so I said it before, I'd like to defer this item indefinitely, but I, I just wanted some clarity, some clarification. With this crosswalk, this was added to the comp plan, right? Or this, this crosswalk with the?
No, that's a five-year transportation plan.
So that was added along with a, another crosswalk on 62nd and 13th Street?
The possibility, the list includes both and obviously it's a five-year plan so that those two are in there to be accomplished within the next five years, provided that the, the numbers and the study warrants the, the device.
Okay.
The crosswalk.
Okay. Other than that, I'd just like to defer this item to a later date.
Okay, indefinitely?
Indefinitely for now.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed. Please defer it indefinitely, Madam Clerk.
Do you know it?
And when you get a chance, next item.
Okay, now, next item, item 11, under, item 11A, this is a public hearing, this is a second reading of an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida amending chapter nine, article seven of the Code of Ordinances, transient vacation rentals.
Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Let, let her read it first and then.
I think we're going to do.
Yeah, no, let her read it, let her read it. Go ahead, so keep going, sorry.
Including additional definitions, expanding life safety requirements requiring smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, hardwired to main electrical system in every room in the vacation dwelling, requiring ground fault circuit interruptors, requiring licensed electrical contractors to conduct any electrical installation, increasing license to, license cost to, to $2,500 per year, dollars per year, providing for sanctions, repealing all ordinances of chapter nine, section seven in conflict, providing for severability, providing for renumbering, providing for codification and providing for an effective date. Item sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanis.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I had a conversation with the city attorney where he informed me that he had a conversation with Mr. Pena, that there's an issue that we need to consider and include in this ordinance. So I believe that we're going to need more time.
Okay.
To, to, you know, we need to correct the heading and also we need to, to change and add so we can.
So if we're changing the heading, we get to re-advertise?
Yes.
Yes. So, 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 yeah, we, we need more time to, to tweak it and, and make it right because of the, the issues that have come up.
No problem. Mr. Attorney, please tell me how we procedurally make sure that we're clean on this.
Well, procedurally, I would present it, the heading again to the commission and it will be published and it will be the normal process that.
Do I need to open the public hearing on this or?
You do.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Are we closing it or are we keeping it open?
Well.
Are we continuing or closing it?
Since we have to advertise it anyway, you may close it.
Is there anyone for public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Go, go ahead. Public hearing is now closed and we're just going to, we advertise it, right? There's no vote required. Well, I, I guess, are we, we're deferring it or are we killing it? What's the procedure here?
You're deferring. You're doing it again.
So we're going to have a first reading again and a public hearing and a second reading again.
This, this item had been withdrawn.
Okay.
Therefore, we start now.
You're withdrawing it, Vice Mayor?
Yes, we need, we need more time to effectively, you know, change the heading and, and change the content of it so we can address this, this issues that have come up.
Okay.
And this item just came in. I mean, we learned about the issues yesterday.
Great, okay, perfect. We don't need to do anything else? We're good? All right. Next item.
Our next item is our item D and E, Mr. Mayor, and these are, this is a request for mitigation of liens for court violations at the property located in 1901 67th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 31455, and owner Pell Corporation. But, Mr. Mayor, they are not present, so I'll request to withdraw these two items, item D and E.
Okay. Noted. I'll just, I'll just be clean, all in favor of deferral, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Not opposed. Go ahead.
Next item is item 11G, recommendation by the office of the city manager to implement a fee of $20 for the purpose of providing recording services of notice of commencement utilized in the permit process.
All right, explain this one.
Okay, so as part of the process for the building services offered by the city, building department services, there's a form that is called a notice of commencement with, that comes attached to building permit applications. And I encountered this myself when I processed my building plans and I realized that I had to take it down to Miami-Dade County to the clerk of the court to get it recorded because it's part of the building permit. If we have a building department, I think part of the service would be to allow all the filing of these documents to the clerk of the court for a nominal fee to the contractors that are doing work in the city or the residents that are pulling building permits. I think it would be beneficial if we implement a fee for filing and we have the, the software to do the filing of the documents to the clerk of the court. And I bring it to your consideration before we ask the attorney to prepare a resolution for this, but I think it's not that, that we're going to generate a lot of money, it's that we're going to expand the service that we offer.
Yeah, so.
And help the resident by not making them to go downtown.
So what, what, what does that entail? Is it like, is it similar to?
Notice of commencement is giving notice that, that work is going to begin at that property, building work or any type of work that requires this type. And, and so it's a notice that gets recorded with the clerk's office. And if there's a lien search, if there is a property that's changing hands, obviously the title company wants to know what's going on with the property and that's why it is recorded for those purposes.
So today you have to go down to the clerk's, the recorder's office in downtown to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have a program that a mayor's been using, which she sends all the, her, her documentation to the clerk of the court's office and, and I said, you know.
Simplify.
It's, it's called Simplify and it's, it's, it's a great tool. It really is a great tool and maybe we're under utilizing it. So why not for, for a small amount have our clerks send it?
At the convenience, yeah, absolutely.
It's a convenience.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
Let me expand a mil, a little bit on that.
Go ahead, Attorney, and then Vice Mayor.
The issue is this, at times, there's a contract between the citizen and a contractor and an amount of money is set. The contractor does the work, the citizen will pay the contractor, but the contractor will not pay the, his worker or the material man. So therefore, they can come out after you and you would have to pay twice if you don't file a notice of commencement. Miami-Dade County requires before they issue a permit that you do file a notice of commencement. But that would be something that, as the manager said, that it would be very beneficial for the city.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So just to be clear, who, if you hire a contractor, is, is he responsible for filing the notice of commencement?
No.
No, the, the owner of the property.
So the owner of the property is responsible for filing?
For filing, right.
And this is something that, that.
Is it something that, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, is it something that the contractor typically does for the owner as part of the, like, you know, I know the responsibilities on the owner.
He'll bring it in with the plans when he submits his plans, so for the processing of the plans. But the owner is a responsible party for filing this document.
Got it, right. So, so, so basically the contractor does not have the responsibility to do that?
No.
It, 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 it's on the.
It's on the property owner, correct.
So most, most of the time, the property, you know, as a layperson, most property owners, you know, that, that are going to do new construction to their homes probably don't know that they need to do this.
They, they don't, some do because this notice of commencement has been in existence for a very long time. The county also requires it.
Mr. Pena, can you elaborate?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm kind of confused because, you know, if, if, if you, you know, hire a contractor to, to build a house, I mean, he's, he's got to be responsible for.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The notice of commencement is part of the building permit application. The app, the, whoever the applicant is, whether it's the owner or the contractor, that's the second page on the form that has to be filled out and filed. The purpose of the notice of commencement is to tell the world that there's construction going on in your house. If that contractor decides not to pay the suppliers that he got, then they go after him and they, it's, it clears the owner from responsibility. Okay? So it's not something that gets left. We tell the owner or the contractor, both, that we need that form before they can get issued a permit.
Right, but the form must be signed by the property owner.
Correct.
And typically if it's up to the property owner, then he's got to go down to the clerk's office to get it done.
Exactly.
Correct.
And we can do it for them with this software?
Very, it's a one, two, three approach.
Yeah.
And it's only required for projects over $2,500.
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, so please, please work on the resolution. Does anyone have any questions on that? Any other questions?
It's a $20 fee what we're proposing, which is really nominal compared to the money that, that we pay for building permanent.
No, it's, it's a convenience. If no one has any other questions, you know, bring that, bring that when, when it's ready.
So we'd like to bring that back at the next commission meeting for a resolution.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 11H, discussion in reference to Little Library Project. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Chavez.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to openly get an update on the Little Library. I know that we discussed it, I know we discussed it privately, Madam Manager.
Yes.
Just wanted to bring it out in the open and update whoever's listening and the residents out there.
Well, where'd it go? It used to be in the back of the room.
It's actually making its way slowly but surely to Cooper Park, at the designated place where you and I spoke. And also, close to the future home of the Connect to Protect Program.
The future, slow, slow-moving.
That's right.
That one was gonna move slow, the, the Little Free Library, like, like we mentioned, we're not going to bring it at the same time. There's no impact on, on the location, so. What, what's the, for the, when's the, what's the timeline on, on installation on that?
On the Little Library project, probably a couple of weeks. Is that correct, Mr. Pena? Tomorrow, the four-by-four, okay.
So, what is a four-by-four?
So, that's.
Okay.
That holds, the foundation of the structure.
So, so then after that, it would be one other?
Maybe week or so, so we can plant some flowers, and, you know, just make it nice, and we can have a little ground opening there.
Yeah, but if, if you can, if you can, make sure to keep the commissioner abreast, so that he can plan something. I know it's his project, too.
I know they have the stones, that, the, the walking stones that lead up to the Little Library. So, I, I think they have most of the materials.
If you want, Commissioner, you can plant a little book drive or something to the community.
Sounds good. Sounds good, Mr. Mayor. And in addition to that, there are the other little libraries, the plastic ones.
Yes.
That we want to give to the schools. I believe the last day of school is June seventh, could be mistaken. But I'd like to be able to do something at the schools sometime in the near future with those two as well.
Mr. Pena, those are in your, in your office or in your shop back there? The, the other, the little libraries that we initially purchased? Okay, so.
Do we need anything to release it to the schools, or is that, is that nominal?
I, I don't believe that we do. It's a, it's a donation that we're making to the school for a particular project.
So, feel free to schedule it on your own, Commissioner.
Sounds good, and I'll keep you guys abreast of that as well.
We'll, we'll work to make it happen, but I'm, it's, it's definitely a work in progress.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Uh, next item.
Item twelve, Consent Agenda Items, and we have one item on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
This was already reported on, that's why it's consent. It was brought up by the chief at the last meeting. Next item.
Item thirteen, Good of the Order.
Anyone for Good of the Order?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, a few weeks ago, I went to the Brianna Vigar Foundation 5K in Miami Lakes. That's where we were supposed to be getting the AED from the foundation that we were going to be taking to the rec center. Like everything else nowadays, it's on back order, so I'm waiting to hear back from the foundation. When we receive that, I'll let you guys know, and then we'll set something up at the rec.
Beautiful, beautiful. All right, motion to adjourn? We have a motion.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.